Ready, sir?
Yes, sir. Roll call.
Jerem?
Here.
Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Mr. President?
Here. Please rise for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invocation by council member Gene Stothard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In honor of Martin Luther King Day that's coming up, I wanted to read a couple verses from a song that I actually read last year, too, and it was by James Taylor, and the song is called "Shed a Little Light." Let us turn our thoughts today to Martin Luther King and recognize that there are ties between us, all men and women living on the earth, ties of hope and love, sister and brotherhood, that we are bound together in our desire to see the world become a place in which our children can go free and strong. We are bound together by the task that stands before us and the road that lies ahead. We are bound. There is a feeling like the clenching of a fist, there's a hunger in the center of the chest, there's a passage through the darkness and the mist, and though the body sleeps, the heart will never rest. Shed a little light, O Lord, so that we can see.
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record on January 11th, no notice for a brief council and regular city council meeting January 15, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on these fall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk?
Zoning ordinance on final reading plan board attachments, items five, six, and seven are one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from LI to R7 Medium Density Malle Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seven is an ordinance to approve a development agreement providing for public improvements, which the developers are responsible. We have a request from the developer for a three-week layover and continuing the public hearing.
Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Laid over three weeks. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, Agenda Item Number Eight through Nine shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Liquor, Item Number Ten and Eleven go together. Ten is Louis Wine Bar, 16920 Wright Plaza Suite 118, Class C liquor license, new application, new location. Twenty is the same applicant, same location for catering liquor license.
Public hearing on Agenda Items Numbers Ten and Eleven begin now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. I'm here appearing with Jamie Burrow, who is the principal manager of this restaurant group. They're going to put in, with your blessing, a wine bar there, which will also serve food, which will be open seven days a week. You might remember Jamie, he did play for our beloved Huskers back in the Eric Crouch era, when they really had a good team. A little editorial. But with that, we're here for any questions you might have.
Ouch! Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Just one question. I was wondering if Jamie has any more eligibility left.
I think we should all be thankful I don't. The physique isn't, I weigh about the same, but structured much differently.
All right. Thanks. Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It is approved. Six, zero, one, passing. Item Number Twelve. Pizza Hut, 4925 L Street, request permission to appoint Jared Nichols, manager. We have a request from the applicant to withdraw this application.
Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Withdrawn seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda should be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number Thirteen was held on January the eighth, 2013. Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers Fourteen through Eighteen are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and whether you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Item Ordinance on Final Reading, Item Number Nineteen, Special Ordinance, Lending Special Tax for Weeds, Group Number 2013-01, we have an amendment.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number Nineteen was held on January the eighth, 2013.
Is this an amendment at all?
No, this is just an amendment.
Move the amendment.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes. Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Item Number Twenty is a special ordinance, special tax for litter, Group Number 2013-3, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty was held on January the eighth, 2013. Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Mr. President?
Yes. Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, no meeting being held January 22nd, the third reading of public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-One shall be held on January 29th. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading on Agenda Items Number Twenty-Two through Thirty shall be held on January 29th. The public hearing on these items are today. Item Number Twenty-Two, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of constructing the 42nd and Q Street Bridge Replacement and Intersection Improvement Project.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Three, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of constructing the South Interceptor Force Main Central Segment Sewer Project.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Four, ordinance declaring necessity of acquiring private property for the purpose of constructing the South Interceptor Sewer Main North Segment and North Gravity Sewer Project.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Five, ordinance declaring necessity of requiring private property for the purpose of constructing the Dundee Streetscape.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Six, ordinance authorizing issue of purchase order to Interstate Power Systems for price agreement for the Missouri wastewater treatment plant and Papillion Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Seven, ordinance approving a bid from Papillion Sanitation Services to provide rubbish and recycling container pickup services for the libraries.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Eight, ordinance to approve the Eighth Amendment to the redevelopment agreement to the City of Omaha Durham Western Heritage Museum, which extends the development agreement for three more years.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Kristy Janson, Executive Director of the Durham Museum, 801 South 10th Street, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Twenty-Nine, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize the distribution of the Play Street Grant Award to fund four Omaha citywide Play Street events.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Twenty-Nine begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Carlos Morales, City of Omaha Planning Department. I am both a proponent and here to answer questions, if you have any.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk? Public hearing is closed. Excuse me.
Item Number Thirty, ordinance to provide for approval of a contract to assist in the payment of the county's victim witness program.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Thirty begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item Number Thirty-One is Metropolitan Entertainment Convention Authority Financial Statements and Independent Audits Reports, June 30, 2012 and 2011.
Roll call.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Mr. President?
Yes.
Appeal rejection and ordinance on second reading. Item Number Thirty-Two is Bauer Built Tires Incorporated appeals rejection of their bid on November 28, 2012 for City of Omaha tire contract.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number Thirty-Two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Quinn with Bauer Built Tire. This young lady is Brittany Perry. She is manufacturer rep for Continental General Tire. Can I pass this out to you real quick? Recently, we bid the tire bid for the City of Omaha, and we were rejected due to some nomenclature in the bid. We met all specifications of tires, and they called for certain numbers or certain names on this bid, and specifically there were Firestone, Bridgestone, General, Michelin, Goodyear, and Dunlop. In the tire world, there are Tier One, Tier Two tires, and so on and so forth, and certain companies own other ones. Two of the companies you have on here, Goodyear owns the Dunlop brand, which you approved, and Bridgestone owns Firestone brand, which you approved. You also approved General Tire. Continental owns General Tire, and we were able to bid with Continental's aggressive pricing. We were able to bid some Continental tires on that bid also, and make it a savings to the city, which in turn allowed us to be the lowest bidder on the bid. It was rejected because Continental wasn't specifically on there, but the General Tire was. And I have some paperwork there in front of me. If you look at the paperwork on the left where I've highlighted, speaks specifically about General Tire being purchased by Continental and Continental being parent company a long time ago, '87, I believe is right. I brought Brittany Perry with me. She's got some paperwork with her that states the name that they had previously. I'll let Brittany speak to that.
Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Perry, representing Continental Tire, the Americas LLC. Can you not hear me? I'm sorry. Again, name is Brittany Perry, representing Continental Tire, the Americas LLC. The only documentation I have here...
And your address, please.
For the corporation?
For your address.
It'd be in Omaha, Nebraska. Personal address or... Okay, we don't have a office here. I'm just a state representative. But our headquarters is in Fort Mill, South Carolina.
Thank you.
We also, I have before me the articles of incorporation where we actually have documentation showing that Continental Tire purchased General Tire, and the date of that was December 7th of 1994. So just proof that we are the same company at this point.
And in that documentation she has, it states that the name formerly was Continental General Tire, and when Continental reincorporated, they called it Continental only, but they own General and produce General. The point being here, General Tire is considered a Tier Two tire as a Dunlop or a Firestone is. Continental is considered Tier One as the Bridgestone, Michellins, and Goodyears are. We were able to bid on your bid some Continental tires, which are a better tire, a Tier One tire, and still come in as the lowest bid, and were rejected because of that name. So our appeal to you is we'd like you to reconsider that bid. We believe Continental Tire is, with our documents here, we can show you, are every bid as good as every other tire on there and fit the nomenclature of it.
So you're stating that Continental Tire is a Tier One tire?
Correct.
And in the tire world, that means that what? That's a premium tire?
Premium tire.
General Tire is like their...
Tier Two.
Tier Two tire.
And basically, what happens is that when we come out with a brand-new steer driver trailer tire, we move the previous generation to our general line, making it our more, I guess, economy-driven line where it's more affordable for end users. But the Tier One is our premium brand.
And we're saying that the City of Omaha, in the bid proposal, we just specified General Tire?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And on your own initiative, you included Continental tires, which is the Tier One tire, which is theoretically a better tire, but you came in with a lower bid, even though you included a more premium tire.
And the way we were able to do that with Brittany's help, every tire company manufacturer has a government program, and the government program has different pricing, obviously, for cities and counties, entities like that. And even with the Continental Tier One tire, the pricing came in at $3,000 underneath the next closest bidder. So we were able to provide you a quality tire, come in at the lowest bid, which it states right here in front of me. Excuse me, just a minute. Obviously, you folks know this, but it states on the bid, bid will be awarded to one successful vendor based on total extended cost of all types and sizes identified. And we met that requirement.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Osborn from GCR Tire Center at 6706 L Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We did have the second lowest bid to Bauer Built. The first thing I would like to say is thank you guys for your time. We appreciate that you guys put such thought and effort into the bid proposals you get, especially since I am a Omaha, Nebraska taxpayer. Only, the only reason that they started bidding Continental tires was because their Firestone bid to sell medium truck tires was pulled. On the first bid that was sent in and all of the bids were rejected, they bid nothing but Firestone. So to come back and call it a Tier Two tire now, after they had already bid them all and then realized they couldn't bid them again, I think is a bit hypocritical.
Would you mind, could you restate that again? I'm not sure I understood exactly what you said.
About six months ago, there was a first bid that was proposed, and three tire companies put in bid proposals. At that time, Bauer Built, myself, and Cross Dillon Tire all put in bids for Firestone tires, strictly Firestone tires, with the exception of Bauer Built did bid one Goodyear tire on theirs. Two months after that bid was proposed, it was discovered, I shouldn't say discovered, announced that Firestone, Bridgestone was pulling their medium truck tires from Bauer Built distributors. So at that time, the bid was, all three bids were rejected, and then it was resent out. And that's when they decided that they would bid Continental tires and General tires, which is within their right to do. But on the other hand, a Dayton tire is also made by Firestone, but it's not one of the six approved tires on the bid, which is why nobody else bid it. Now, I will admit that there's not Dayton tire sizes in all sizes that were bid, but there are some, but it wasn't bid because of the fact it's not one of the six tires that stated. Does that make more sense?
Thank you.
And I will answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Mr. Thompson? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson?
I'd like for Bauer Built to have a chance to rebut what was just said.
I'd like to thank you very much.
Go ahead and identify yourself again.
I'm sorry. Steve Quinn, Bauer Built Tire, Omaha. I'm also an Omaha taxpayer, by the way, so, and I'm out of eligibility, too, so. Anyway, a couple of statements there were technically incorrect. We didn't bid any Goodyear tires from our Goodyear dealer. And secondly, Bauer Built sees a relationship with Bridgestone, Firestone, and the medium truck, which is heavy-duty market. We are still a Bridgestone/Firestone dealer for passenger light truck, and a vast significant majority of those tires are on that bid, and we bid those in that line. In order to, in order to come into the bid competitively and get you, as a city, the best bang for your buck, we bid the Continental Generals on there. So that's, that was our thinking there. What can we do for a city to make this bid competitive and be in the right place, right time, and provide the best product that they can get? That's why we went with the Continental Generals. It's truly Bauer severed the relationship with Bridgestone/Firestone. That has no bearing or effect as far as the bid. Some of those tires are on there. We don't bid Goodyear either, and Goodyear didn't bid this bid at all. So we bid what we knew would work for you.
I would like to make my statement, if I could. Brittany Perry, Omaha, Nebraska, representing Continental Tire. I'd also like to state that Bauer Built Tire was just recently signed as an authorized dealer as of July 1st, which may be a reason as to why initially the Continental General Line was not on their first bid. New dealership, new tire, new brand, probably a little bit uncomfortable when they weren't familiar with our programs and our product.
So forty, six months from there to now, obviously, what Brittany's saying is now that we're up to speed on their government programs and everything, we're actually able to understand and offer them to you and know how they work, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. You may want to not go so far, just in case if somebody else has a question. So you may just want to stay close to the front there. Thank you for right now.
Can I ask one other question on the next item, thirty-three?
We'll wait, we'll wait till that one comes.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
And we'll bring you back up.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Who's going to answer for the city on this issue of purchasing? Help me out back there, please.
Bob Stube, Public Works. Mark McCoy, Fleet Manager, he will discuss a little bit, questions you might have. As far as purchasing, I'm not sure purchasing is here.
Okay. Is Mark here?
Yep. Mark McCoy, City of Omaha Equipment Services Manager.
Mark, what's wrong with taking a Tier One tire and substituting it in and saving the city money? What's, help me understand that. And I'm maybe just missing it, but help me understand.
Well, I mean, the tire tiers really, I tried to research this because I had never really heard of the different tier tires, and I can't find like an industry standard where they list Tier One tires, Tier Two tires, different tiers of tires. So I don't know that that's applicable. I mean, I guess you could say that yours is a Tier One, but I don't know if there's a, an industry standard that proves that or bears that out. How do they come up with, what's a Tier One, what's a Tier Two? I can't answer that.
In three sentences or less, what is the city's position on this appeal?
Well, we select six tires. There's forty different manufacturers of tires out there. So we've selected six tires that we feel are good for the city. There's Cooper tires, manufacturer. There's lots of other manufacturers out there, and we picked the six that we feel are the best for the city.
Doesn't Continental make one of the six?
They're, they're not the direct brand, though. I mean, Dayton, Firestone makes Dayton also. There's, tire companies make different brands of tires, and I guess that's one that they make.
So the brand that was put on this bid, help me to understand that it's an inferior product.
The brand that they bid?
Yes. What makes it inferior?
Inferior? It's a different, it's a different tire. We haven't tested that tire, so I really can't answer that it's, that it's inferior.
So it's just a matter of we're not, we're not familiar with it?
Yeah.
But it could or could not be a good tire?
It's possible. There's other ones out there. I mean, we test new products all the time.
Okay.
So.
Okay. All right. So our position is strictly just...
Based on past performance?
Past performance and go strictly by what's said in the RFP, and don't go, don't deviate one ounce either way. That's our position, right?
I mean, it's pretty clear in this case. There's, there's brand names. Of course, we, we look at gray areas, but this is, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that there are six brands, and they elected not to choose one of them brands. What we have vendors do, sometimes they'll submit multiple bids. They'll submit two bids. They'll submit one that complies, and they'll submit another one that they may feel, you know, is, is one that they want to submit. So that would be within their right to do that also.
And again, our position, or the city's position, is that we just don't know enough about the brand that they submitted.
That's correct.
Okay.
We haven't ran them before.
Okay. All right. And I want to respect that. Citizens in my district, they're kind of in a common sense mode right now, and when I don't sound like I'm making common sense, they beat up on me, and then I'll say, go see Bob Stube. That's what I'll say. I'll say something like that.
Okay.
But let me see if I can work it through my mind. I'm still trying to put my arms around it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy? If you could.
Yes, sir.
I, I too. I, so basically, what we're saying is that the bid specified General tires.
Correct.
They didn't, the Bauer Tire Company, they didn't include that on their bid, but they did include Continental tires, which according to them is a premium brand of tire manufacturer by General.
Correct. That's what they're stating.
Okay.
I don't know that there's proof of what's a premium and what's not, what's not a premium.
That's subjective. Right. I mean, they're saying it's a premium tire. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mr. McCoy? As I read item thirty-three, the contract that is to be awarded today is a twelve-month contract. Is that correct?
That's correct, with two one-year possible extensions.
So if this appeal were to be denied, and if item thirty-three, the bid proposal So, if this appeal were to be denied, and if item 33, the bid proposal from the putative bid award winner were to be granted, you could spend the next several months meeting with the Continental Tire rep in terms of getting familiarized with their product, their testing, their performance, their data, and at the end of the 12 months decide whether or not to exercise your option to renew for one or another year or to rebid it, correct?
By all means.
So, if we were to deny the appeal, would you be open to meeting with the manufacturer's rep from Continental and allowing her the opportunity on behalf of Continental to share with the City of Omaha more information about their tire brand and this alleged disparity between Tier 1 and Tier 2 type quality in their testing and performance?
Certainly. My doors open all the time. I talk to vendors on a daily basis, almost. I've never been contacted by them, but I'd be willing to sit down with them.
Now, the contract says that it's a 12-month price agreement in the amount of $302,167.2. Does that automatically mean the city will purchase that amount of tires in the 12 months, or it's up to that amount for the specified tires that the city may purchase?
Yeah. It's based on a estimated quantity that we'll purchase. We take past history of number of tires we use, and then we ask for prices on that so we can cost them out and try to get the best deal. So, we're not getting a great deal on a tire that we only use three of and a bad deal on one we may use 400 of. So, those numbers may change.
Thank you. Mr. Kratz?
Yes, sir. Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
The bid, as written, called for certain spec tires within different sizes and quantities, I assume. And if we were to want to award or grant the appeal today, to what risk does the city then incur in terms of a challenge by either the winning recommended...the bid recommended for granting or other contractors that bid on this who are now saying, "We're changing what the agreement was"?
I think from kind of an overall or high-level view is that we put out specifications, and we have a specific bidding process, and we expect people to bid those particular specifications. And if they don't, then we reject them, and that's a very common practice within the city. To deviate from that, I think it could bring some issues. The second-place bidder who did meet the specifications, the first-place bidder who got the award, could certainly make some complaints. Whether or not there's a lawsuit there, I'm not sure I'd say that, but it would be outside of our normal process.
And what, if anything, would prevent or would have prevented Bauer Built, at the time the first round of bids were rejected, from taking the time to educate the Public Works Department and Fleet Maintenance in terms of what their alternative product that they intended to bid was for purposes of allowing the department to decide whether to bid...to issue a new bid, and that would have allowed this.
They certainly could have done that, and that does happen on occasion through our bidding process. Sometimes bidders bring to light to the city another alternative product, and the city, in past cases, have been willing to accept that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. The way I see this is, and this is not the first time we've had a bid appeal where the appellant is saying, "Well, I'm the lowest bid," but the price difference is usually, as we have seen, attributable to a bidder, a company that didn't comply with what the bid specs were. And in this case, the bidder that is appealing didn't take the time, effort, and expense when they could have, when that first round of bids was rejected, to say to the Public Works Department, "Hey, you should consider this tire," or after the bid was issued and they then acquired a new brand, if that's in fact timing as they represent, to say, "Stop the music, do another rejection because you're excluding a perfectly high-performing, premium product that should be considered." And I would just further say that there's nothing going forward from today, if this appeal is denied, to then do those same things so that at the end of the 12-month period, the city can possibly include a new tire in the bid if they, as they say, have a tire that performs as well as they've represented and can convince the Fleet Maintenance Division and the Purchasing Division that that's the fact. And the final thing I'd just like to underscore is that although this appears to be a $302,000, it's an up to within those specs within the next 12 months. So, it doesn't mean that Fleet Maintenance, if in terms of obtaining this additional information from this manufacturer or others, can't then thereafter decide, "Oh, maybe some tires we may have done in the second, third, or fourth quarter of 2013 can't be then rolled into 2014 and rebid it for purposes of obtaining a different tire." So, for those reasons, and again, once reminding myself that I don't want to open up the city to possible litigation or claims by the recommended winning bidders and the other bidders who did comply with the specs, that we should have stuck to our...what the specs were rather than, you know, changing them here, even though we look at it and we may be enticed by a lower number, we have to look at what was bid and what opportunities the non-winning bidder had in order to comply. So, for that reason, I would make a motion to deny this appeal.
Second.
Thank you for that perspective, Mr. Jerem. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The appeal is denied on a 7-0 vote. Item number 32 is an ordinance authorizing...or 33, ordinance authorizing a purchase agent to issue a purchase order, GCR tires, for a 12-month price agreement.
Public hearing on agenda item number 33 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Nope. This is on second reading only. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the third reading and public hearing on agenda items number 34 through 36 shall be held on February 5. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items number 37 through 46 shall be held on January 29. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda item number 47 should be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Item number 48 is Chairman of Board of Equalizations reports approval of the plans and assessments and adjustments made at the regular meeting held January 8, 2013.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And on the supplement pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, the second reading and public hearing on agenda items number 50 shall be held on January 29.
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
220...238.